I handed it over to Ben.
So I should send this email to Ben at Jordan Park? Because Linda, she asked me during National Farm, I told her to send it.
We're looking for parents that are serving the committee. Sometimes they might be at the other park.
So I can just forward it to Ben.
All right, we about ready?
Mayor, I'm ready when you are. You know that.
Yeah, all right, all right.
Mayor, you're ready.
All right. All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our Des Moines City Council meeting. But before that, we have a very exciting presentation for the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board, which is going to meet right now. I will ask the clerk to please take role of the board.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The second item is to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved as well. The third item is a submittal of Family Self-Sufficiency Program Coordinator grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The governing board communication is number 21-352. Any questions or comments on that board?
I'll move the item.
All right, item has been moved. Any discussion? Would you pull the board, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, the next item is awarding a contract for the installation of two 150-kilowatt backup generators for Oak Park Plaza and Highland Park Plaza to Interstate Power Systems, Inc. Larry Swars is the CFO, Council Communication, number 21-351. I think this is a really good thing. Anybody have any comments? If not, could we have a motion?
I'll move.
Item four has been moved. Any discussion? Hearing none, would you pull the board, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, folks, that was a short agenda. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the board sits adjourned. So we'll open a backup. You guys can have your conversation. We'll start our council meeting in about five minutes. All right, I want to welcome everybody to our city council meeting for August 9. We do have a few things to let everybody know about. Due to the increased community transmission of COVID-19 in Polk County, we have implemented a face-covering requirement for our city buildings. And the requirement applies to both the staff and the visiting public and includes attendance at our council meeting, so I want to thank everybody for wearing the mask. And if you do not have a face covering, we, and there have been some that haven't, we'd be happy to supply you with one. Also, for the general public, we welcome germane comments from the public at the appropriate time in our meetings, but this is a council business meeting, and we are, you know, trying to do the work of the public. And the council needs to conduct the people's business, and the council has rules that are validly adopted under Iowa law, and those will be followed. Anyone engaging in disruptive conduct in the council chambers or the great hall will result in those being disruptive, being ordered to leave the building, and being denied read admittance for the remainder of the day. No person will be permitted to stand in the council chamber during council sessions, between the audience seats or on the seats, and the council members, except the persons addressing the council at the speaker's microphone, and only after you've been recognized by myself. And all persons desiring to address the council may do so only when they're recognized, but the council reserves the right to limit the speaker's time in the order in which the speakers may address the council. Under Section 2-70 of the city code, it is illegal to interrupt any person who is addressing the council except by a council member, and it is illegal to disrupt the council meeting. Everyone in attendance has First Amendment rights, and any disruptive conduct by one person or group impinges on the rights of those others present, so disruptive conduct will not be tolerated. If the meeting is disrupted, the public speaking portion of the meeting may be moved to the next in-person meeting, which is not disrupted. And those who disrupt the meeting will not be called on during the meeting, will be ordered to leave the building, and may be cited or arrested for disorderly conduct, trespass, or interfering with the good order of the meeting, or other applicable charges. And as a reminder, we want to remind the public that Rule 28 requires a person that is speaking to the council to state their name, address, and group affiliation, if you have any. So, at any rate, I thought I had to preface this meeting and let everybody kind of know these are the rules that we've had for a while, but just wanted to repeat them for those that hadn't been here before. Let's call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Whoops, sorry, got ahead of myself. We have a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. And I will quickly say that the consent items, item 4A, 4C, H, I, and M have been withdrawn because their inspections are incomplete for those properties, and I think those are all liquor permits. And item 67H was withdrawn. That individual called and is unable to speak this evening. So with that...
I'll move the item number two, Your Honor.
All right, item two has been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any objection? Hearing none, that item passes. Next item is to approve the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 42. And there are no items to be withdrawn for, by council members this evening. I will ask, these are routine items, and they will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless someone, or a council member, there's no council members asking to pull any tonight. Does anybody want to request to pull any items? Is there anybody here that would like to pull any of the consent items? I'm sorry?
Yeah. The new rule is they have to email at K by three o'clock. We need to ask K if any of those emails are...
Yeah. Okay, well, no, you're fine. K, were there any emails from the public? Or anything in writing?
Not at four o'clock, there was. There wasn't.
I'll move item three, Your Honor.
Okay.
So, no.
So, again, these are routine items, and they're enacted by one roll call vote unless we received a objection, and we need to get those, I believe, Mr. Turney, by three o'clock? Yeah, and by four, we had received none. So, would you pull the council on that item, please?
County?
Can we just push the button?
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I guess just push the button.
That's right.
There we go.
All right.
That's seven yes. Motion carries.
That takes us to item 43. These are the hearing items. And before the hearings this evening, we have one zoning item, and for everybody that's watching their agenda, that's item 59. And we also have several vacation hearings, one conveyance hearing, and several bond hearings, and one landmark certification for appropriateness hearing. As a reminder, for those zoning items, again, which is item 59, we will hear from the parties in interest, and then from the general public, if anybody has any general comment. The parties in interest for the zoning items include only the applicant and those for the rezoning, and those people living within that 250 feet of that property to whom the city has sent notice. After all those parties in interest have commented, we will open it up to any member of the public for a germane comment to that item. To aid in recognizing the parties in interest to a zoning item, to speak, I will ask everyone else to not step to the microphone unless they are a zoning applicant or live within that 250 feet and receive that mailed notice. Anyone who approaches the mic before their time will be compared to the list that was mailed, and if you're not on that list, you will be considered disruptive, and again, will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting, and will be required to leave the building. So please, I ask you, wait until I call on the general public for the zoning item, or you will not be called on for the remainder of the meeting, and will be required to leave. After all the parties in interest have been called, the general public comments will not exceed one minute per person to the maximum of seven minutes on those items, on that item this evening, and will be called for germane comment unless the hearing is ended sooner for a failure to make germane comments. For all the bond hearings this evening, we will only be receiving oral and written objections from any resident and/or property owner of the city, so every speaker must give their address of either the property that they own in Des Moines or their Des Moines residence, and then provide their written or oral objections. The objectors will be given, again, a minute per person until comments cease or become repetitive or non-germained. For the remainder of the hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comment at not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes per hearing unless the hearing is ended sooner for a failure to make those germane comments. And we'll begin those hearing items now at this time. Our first hearing item is item 43. Item 43 is on the issuance of not to exceed $30 million Stormwater Management Utility Revenue Bonds, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action. Is there anyone who would like to make comment? And I'll ask the council, any comments on this one?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I'll move item 43 and 43A.
Okay, item 43 and 43A have been moved. Anyone want to make comment? Seeing none?
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item 44 is on the issuance of not to exceed $40 million general obligation urban renewal bonds of the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action. Counsel, any comment on this?
All right.
Item 44 and 44A has been moved. Anyone want to make comment on that item? Seeing none, I'll ask everyone to vote.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 45 is on the issuance of not to exceed $53 million general obligation bonds of the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action. And I ask counsel, any comment on this one? Seeing none?
Mayor, County, if there's no comments, I'll move 45 and 45A.
All right, 45 and 45A have been moved. Any comment from the general public on item 45? All right, seeing none?
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries. I want to remind the council members to unmute themselves, please. And the motion carries.
Item 46, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds of the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes, GCP 1, Council Communication, number 21-348A, under that is authorization to take additional action. Counsel, any comment or motion?
If not, I'll move 46 and 46A.
46, 46A have been moved. Ask the general public, any comment on this $1 million general obligation bond? Seeing none?
That's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 47 is on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds of the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes, GCP 2, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action. Any comment, counsel?
Hearing none, I'll move item 47 and 47A.
All right, 47, 47A have been moved. Any comment from the general public? Seeing none? Ask everybody to vote.
Under that, seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 48 is on the issuance of not to exceed, again, $1 million general obligation bonds for the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, again, for general corporate purposes, GCP 3, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action. Any comment, counsel?
I'll move 48A. 48 and 48A.
All right, have been moved, and we'll open it up and see if there's anyone in the public would like to make comment on this $1 million general obligation bond. Seeing none? Ask everyone to vote.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 49, on the issuance of not to exceed, again, $1 million general obligation bonds of the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes, GCP-4, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action.
Seeing nothing, no one wanting to speak on this from the council, I'll move 49 and 49A.
All right, 49, 49A has been moved. Any comment, general public? Seeing none, I'll ask everybody to vote.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 50, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds of the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, for the general obligation corporate purpose, GCP 5, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action. Counsel, any comment or motion?
If there are no comments, I'll move 50 and 50A.
All right, I'll open it up and ask if there's any comment by the general public. Item 50, 50A. Seeing none, ask everybody to vote.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 51, again, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds of the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes, GCP 6, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action. Counsel, any...
I'll move 51 and 51A.
All right, 50 and 50, or 51 and 51A have been moved. Ask the public, any comment on that item? Again, million dollar general obligation.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 52, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds of the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes, GCP 7, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action.
Move item 52 and 52A.
All right, been moved. Open and ask if there's any public comment. 52 and 52A. Seeing none, ask everybody to vote.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 53 is on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds of the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, general corporate purposes, GCP 8, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action.
I'll move 53 and 53A.
All right, 53 and 53A have been moved. Any comment from the general public? Seeing none, I'll ask everybody to vote.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 54, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds of the city of Des Moines, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes, GCP 9, Council Communication, number 21-348A, is the authorization to take additional action. 54 and 54A.
I'll move 54 and 54A.
All right, have been moved. Ask the public, any comment on this? Seeing none, ask everyone to vote. Seeing none, ask everyone to vote.
Seven yes, motion carries.
55, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds of the City of Des Moines, State of Iowa for general corporate purposes. GCP 10, Council Communication Number 21-348A is the authorization to take additional action. Counsel?
I'll move 55 and 55A.
All right, 55, 55A has been moved. Again, anyone in the public want to make comment on this item? Seeing none.
Your Honor, it's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 56, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million again, general obligation bonds of the City of Des Moines, State of Iowa for general corporate purposes. GCP 11, Council Communication Number 21-348A is the authorization to take additional action. 56 and 56A.
I'll move 56 and 56A.
All right, any comment from the public? Seeing none, ask everybody to vote.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 57, again, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds of the City of Des Moines, State of Iowa for general corporate purposes. GCP 12, Council Communication Number 21-348A is the authorization to take additional action. Counsel, any?
I'll move 57, 57A.
All right, any comment from the general public?
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 58, item 58 is on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds of the City of Des Moines, State of Iowa, general corporate purposes. GCP 13, Council Communication Number 21-348A and A is the authorization to take additional action. And I'm informed that we need to, I believe, Mr. Attorney, don't you think we need to vote on B, C, and D separately?
Yes, sir. The hearing is for 58. And the hearing is not for B, C, and D, those are all the hearings that have already happened. So 58, 58A can be voted on together and then separate votes for the remainder, you're correct.
I'll move 58 and 58A.
There you go.
Okay. Ask if anybody has any comment to be made on 58 and 58A. General public. Seeing none.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
B is directing the advertisement for the sale of $96,845,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2021F, in approving electronic bidding procedures and official statement. The bonds are going to be sold at 10:00 a.m. on August 18, 2021, and a special meeting will be held after that at 4:30 p.m. to give us the results. And I think we just need to vote on that, move that forward.
I'll move on 58B.
Okay, 58B. There's no particular comment from the public on these, okay. All right, this is, these are bonds that we've already laid out. We're just going to see what kind of rating we get when we sell them. And so that meeting, again, on the 18th, will give us kind of the results. And we hope that we get excellent results, which we have most recently. Some of the best in the country, as a matter of fact. All right. Item B, looks like 7O. Let's move on to C. Item C, again, is directing the advertisement for the sale of 5 million and 50,000 taxable obligation bonds, Series 2021G, in approving the electronic bidding procedures and official statements. The bonds, again, are going to be sold at 10:00 a.m. on August 18, 2021, and a special meeting will be held at 4:30, which, again, will announce the results of that.
I'll move 58C.
All right, C has been moved. I'll ask everybody to vote.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, D is directing the advertisement for sale of $29,850,000 Stormwater Management Utility Revenue Bonds, Series 2021H, in approving the electronic bidding procedures and official statement. Again, the bonds are going to be sold at that same, that same day, 10:00 a.m. on August 18, 2021, and a special meeting will be held at 4:30 to announce those results.
I'll move 58D.
58D has been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 59 is on a request from Oscar and Enrique Zentento to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow future land use classification for 2354 East Grand Avenue from neighborhood mixed use to community mixed use district and to rezone from MX 1 Mixed Use District to MX 3 Mixed Use District to allow ongoing operation of a minor vehicle maintenance and repair use on that property. The Plan and Zoning Commission recommends denial, and this was continued from June 14. Note to everybody, this is going to require six affirmative votes and are required to approve the proposed rezoning due to the Plan and Zoning Commission's recommendation for denial. That's part of the Des Moines City Code 134-6.3.9.B.1. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Again, that's going to require six affirmative votes. And B is the final consideration of the ordinance above and the waiver requested by Oscar and Enrique Zentento, again, requires six votes. So any council member want to make quick comment on this one? And then we're going to open it up to the general public. I'm sorry. Yep. Counsel? Let's ask, on this is, again, a rezoning, so we're going to ask the parties in interest first. We'll ask the applicant if they have a representative or they personally are present to step forward.
All right, members of the council, Todd Vonstein, Design Co., 2420 University of Des Moines. This, this project proposes to bring the project and the site into conformity with the MX 3 new zoning requirements. This building, as you can see in the 1920s sandborne, has had the same footprint since at least 1920, it's as far back as we could get. Goes back to 1906 from there, and there was nothing on the property at that time. So we know since 1900, or since 1920, this has been the same footprint and has been a repair station in the neighborhood. And it's, from what we could tell in its entirety, during the neighborhood meeting, it was kind of funny, because one of the, one of the, the attendees from the neighborhood meetings, this old timer, which is, I'm becoming one now, so it's hard for me to say that, just said, "That was a transmission shop for as far back as I can remember." So this has been that same use for as far back as we can remember. We've got the, we've got the heavy buffering against the residential. We heard from one neighbor, the Brennans, they would like us to leave access for them to get their camper out. And so we moved the, we relocated the opening to the alley from the corner to behind their property and relocated the dumpster so that they could get their camper out, and that's the only comment we had. The, the neighborhood did send an email to Councilman Gatto that we answered everything that they needed. That was just before the June 14 meeting. Is there anything else I can answer?
Any questions, anybody, on anything that Todd has presented? You're representing the owner.
Yeah, the owner's here, if you'd like to hear from him.
No, that's, I just want to make sure that's what you're doing.
Yeah.
Do you want to make any comment?
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmember, name's Oscar Zenteno. First of all, I want to apologize for my father. He couldn't be here, he had a family matter out of town. But, I mean, I've been around for 11 years now, this place. I'm trying to make the area look a little better, maybe with this movement, I'm able to make the building look better, make the neighborhood look better. I've lived in the Eastside most of my life. I like my neighborhood, I'd love to stay there, and I believe my neighborhood is happy with my services. I mean, so hopefully this goes through and we're able to keep, keep helping our community.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I had the pleasure of going out and visiting the site back in May, and I met Oscar, I met his father. We talked a lot about it. I also talked to both the neighborhood associations that this is, this is a part of, the Fairgrounds Neighborhood Associations, both of them had some concerns. And I visited with Sue Ann Donovan, and I believe she's here. You know, there, there's a court order, I believe, now that would, would have them bring this up to sight, how we would want it in our city. And this would also, they would be able to continue to do business as a family-owned business, which I think that's, I think that's really good. I would be supportive of, of that. And so I would move item 59A and B.
Okay, which item? Are there any parties in interest that are within that 250 feet of this property that have been noticed? We'd like you to step up at this time, if there is anyone. I don't see anybody. I see heads going like this rather than like this, so we're, we're good, thank you. Are there any other general public comments that would like to be made, that anyone would like to be heard on this item? Not seeing any of those. So we have a motion, and thank you, Todd, and we'll see how it goes. For 59 and 59A and 59B, can we take these in one vote? Okay. All right.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, you got it. Item 60 is on a request from the Des Moines Film for a certification of appropriateness for proposed exterior alterations to the Varsity Theater located at 1207 25th Street, right here in Des Moines. Open it up, see if there's anyone who would want to make comment on this. I will say that I have been up there and have gone to that theater for a long time. I'll just leave it at that. And it's really good to see it being refurbished and put back into, really, a first-class theater. I've been missing the Varsity Theater and...
I haven't been to a movie since the club. No, it's a great addition for that great neighborhood.
So anybody want to make a comment on this? For the record. Hearing none, can we have a motion?
I'd like to move item 60, or did you move it, Connie?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just, Sue Ann slipped out here. I understood the Board of Adjustment wouldn't let them put an electronic sign out there, that it still has to be the old place cards and light from behind. I think that's kind of backwards, but, I mean, that's the way the Board of Adjustment did it, so. But I'll move 60, that's one of my old high school classmates owns the place, so I've got, I've got to stay true to your class, you know?
Okay. Item's been moved. Great old theater.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 61 is on the vacation of a portion of Southwest McKinley Avenue located north of and adjoining 6020 Southwest McKinley Avenue and a conveyance to Nicholas Van Patton for $250. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Nicholas Van Patton and requires six votes. Anybody here make any comment from the public? Germane comments to this property at 6020 Southwest McKinley. Seeing none?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 61, 61A and 61B.
All righty, been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 62 is on a conveyance of a permanent gas easement located at 101 East 2nd Street to Mid-American Energy Company for East 2nd Street reconstruction, Court Avenue to Iowa Interstate Railroad Project. Let's go ahead and open this up for any Germane comments from the general public. Up to one minute per person to speak on this item. Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move item 62, Your Honor.
Item's been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, item 63, it's on the vacation of portions of Southeast 3rd Street and Southeast 4th Street right-of-way, located north of Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway and south of vacated East Elm Street as part of the Market District redevelopment. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Aaron Nelson Douglas, our Development Services Director, and requires six votes. Again, we'll ask if anybody has any Germane comments regarding the vacation, the portions of this Southeast 3rd Street and 4th. Any comments? Anybody? Seeing none?
I will move item 63A and B.
All right, 63A and B has been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 64 is on the vacation of Ohio Street right-of-way located north of Franklin Avenue and east of and adjoining 101 Franklin Avenue. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Again, this is a vacation of Ohio Street right-of-way located north of Franklin. I'll ask if there's anybody here to make Germane comments about that vacation. Anybody? All right, seeing none?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move 64, 64A, and I'd like to waive the second and third reading since nobody has shown up to object.
All right, it's been moved to 64, 64A, and to waive the second and third reading.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, let's note that it's 5:40 at this... Let's note that it's 5:40 at this time. And we'll quickly move to ordinances versus consideration. Amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number 21-341A is a loading zone removal east side of 6th Avenue between Euclid Avenue and Clinton Avenue.
If there are no comments, I would like to move item 65, 65A and waive the second and third reading.
Been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes.
All right, quickly from myself, Councilmember Mantlebaum and Councilmember Wass to discuss deer and waterfowl management. And who'd like to speak first? Josh, you want to go ahead?
Josh, you want to take deer and I'll take geese?
Sure. So I think this is something that has come to us. There are a number of forested areas throughout our city, and there are a number of deer populations that I think have been growing over time, which at times can lead to, I get a number of complaints, some of which are related to the feeding of deer and essentially creating an attractive nuisance that way. So this is just, my hope is that we can take some very minor steps so that we have tools to address if there's any sort of activity that, feeding of deer that creates essentially an attractive nuisance and brings wild animals to places that it is destructive and it's also happens to be harmful for the deer population as well. I think there are best practices that we've already identified that exist that other communities in Iowa have adopted. And so this would simply be taking the work that staff has already done to identify what's been adopted and move forward with getting an ordinance or getting our ordinances drafted in a way that is consistent with that. So that's at least my piece, Carl.
Sure. Well, we started out just asking to bring a discussion forward on deer, but the waterfowl management is largely about giant Canada geese. And at one time in our youth, those geese used to migrate, but it just must be so wonderful to be, to stay in Des Moines, that we have, probably the worst example is Easter Lake, where the deer, I think Ben can supply some photos, that the geese actually largely cover the lake and the trails. There have been some issues about vehicles stopping for geese crossing M.L. King East, like east of Kemen, that there have been several near accidents. Ben Page tells me that a female goose lays seven eggs a year. So this is why we have a health issue with geese, and we're asking for some help on this. The Iowa DNR recommends that when the eggs are laid, that we get volunteers to go out and oil the eggs, and that's just a heavy burden. So the eggs don't incubate. So we're asking for some help to control the geese population.
Would both of you want to refer that onto our Parks Department and maybe even to the water? I understand maybe the Water Works is going to start rethinking how they're going to handle the deer herd down there? And how we move forward on this? This is just sort of a request to discuss, and I think we ought to give some direction to the manager on...
I believe there's a resolution perhaps, at least in draft form, regarding deer.
Yeah, it would be great to get the deer ordinance on our, on a future agenda. I mean, I think it's ready to go. Staff just needs the direction. They've identified the best practice. But I think we just need council buy-in before we spend additional staff time getting something drafted for us.
Well, would the appropriate thing then be to quickly cover the work session and let's go over the draft proposal? So everybody understands what we're doing here?
Dan, or if it's as simple as...
Bring it forward.
Share it and bring it back. Either way.
I would just bring it back to the meeting. I think everybody's, I think everybody's had complaints.
Yeah, we're aware. I mean, Carl said it best, the Easter Lake Trail, we've been fighting this battle. It's, it's good that we're, we've included the geese population with, with the deer. And yeah, I would be comfortable with it just coming back and we could address that.
Because I think there are some that look at it from a perspective that maybe we ought to thin the herd, in which case that would be bow hunting or something to reduce it. I'm not quite sure how we would handle, other than grabbing the eggs, I guess, the geese population. I don't generally hang out where they lay the eggs, so I don't come across them as often as you do, but you know.
Well, we definitely need some, some help on this throughout the city. And actually, the suburban areas have, you know, equal problems too, but so.
Mayor, if I could, this, this could be brought back as just the feeding aspect of not feeding either the deer or waterfowl. And we can, on that evening council meeting, spend just a few minutes talking about what the next steps might be, if council so desires in other respects. I can tell you, there's the report on the waterfowl that talks a lot about landscaping around water features and making sure there are tall grasses such that the bird and the fowl do not want to walk right out onto the sidewalk. So there's, there's opportunities like that that can be discussed briefly and maybe followed up in further actions. But we could very quickly come back up to feeding aspect.
Yeah. So with saying that, and I agree with you 100%, but we need to educate the folks around the trail, because, you know, they've, they've come to enjoy the trail and having all the grass cut down. And so when we allow the grass to grow for the geese population, they're not understanding why we're not cutting it down around there. So I've had many complaints, like, no one's cutting this grass anymore. What is going on? So...
Maybe education, maybe.
Yeah. I'm not sure how we would educate some of them as part of that, but we definitely are going to need to do that.
Mayor, if I can add, I've been getting a few complaints about every other year, it seems like, coyote. Especially in the ravines down there on 30th Street and Jefferson, backing all the way up to Whitmer. The best we can do, that I've heard, is just trap and just hope you can trap them. But it is, it's getting other people's, like their dogs or cats, getting into fights with them and probably losing. So I think if we could put in a provision for coyotes as well, I'd like to see that go forward as well.
Mr. Manager, do you have some direction as to, are we going to discuss wildlife?
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anybody agree we're going to ask the manager to bring back recommendations on these issues and...
Yeah, including an ordinance and additional discussion.
And initial ordinances is, I think everybody is...
Yep.
Indicated about feeding.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
If we need a motion, I'm happy to make that.
Yeah, I can go ahead.
That motion.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none. All right. Scott, you have some marching orders on that. Let's move now to our communications and quickly, you know, for those persons wishing and that are scheduled to speak this evening, we'll call on you, all those that are registered to speak. And it looks like this evening, we have 11 that had registered and this evening, and you all receive up to two minutes to make your comments. So keep your own time, because at the end of those two minutes, clerks can announce time and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we will immediately move on to that next speaker. So we want to hear from all those that have registered to speak, and we encourage residents to be respectful of others' viewpoints that are maybe different from their own. While you may certainly disagree with their viewpoint, I want to remind everyone that the council's rules provide that any comments that are slanderous to, will result in that speaker being barred from further comment. As the presiding officer, I will determine whether those comments are slanderous and get at least some support, I hope, from my city attorney that we in fact have called that properly. Fair warning, arguing after that pronouncement of that determination on any matter is not permitted, and doing so will be considered disruptive and result in the speaker being barred again from further comment and being asked to leave the building. So any rate, let's quickly just move on. And I'm going to ask our first speaker, Taylor Weber.
My name is Taylor Weber. My pronouns are he/him of 1334 Terry Avenue. I am speaking today because I could not speak at the last meeting for which I had signed up. I wanted to speak last meeting due to a number of items on the consent agenda that deserved public input. Those items included a ridiculous amount of funding for the DMPPD and paying for overtime of narcotics investigations that undoubtedly will be used to target people of color in our community. Most problematic on the consent agenda was an extension of a security contract with Conley, who has publicly and thanks to great reporting privately to DMPPD leadership spoken about the protests over the last year-plus using terms like terrorist, and I quote, "little sissy bitches." This item was quickly pulled from the agenda after public pressure, but the council has still not addressed the issue of the existing contract. I would have loved to have given that feedback when it would have been relevant last meeting, but you have changed the rules to make that not possible, limiting the ability for the public to provide input on critical items on the consent agenda. Let's say a miracle happened, and I did speak at last week's meeting, it actually wouldn't have mattered then either. The consent agenda is being abused to ram through problematic items without the community's ability to have any input. As is clear with recent reporting from Rekabasu, the issue the city and DMPPD are having is criminalizing dissenting voices, and it is systemic and undemocratic. I call on the council to vote to rescind item 53 from the June 28th meeting, which was a full endorsement for DMP leadership who knew about Conley's deplorable comments that I mentioned earlier. I also call on the council to immediately cancel all contracts with Mr. Conley and launch an investigation for why his problematic comments have not been addressed sooner, considering the DMP's consistent contact with Mr. Conley. Trust will not be rebuilt with the community until there is accountability for the continued criminalization of speaking out and speaking up for what's right.
All right. Adam Kellinin.
Hello, my name is Adam Kellinin, and I live at 420 Court Avenue. Yeah, I'd like to echo a lot of what Taylor just said. It's really troubling that we know that, I don't know how many of you knew, but the city at large knew through the police department that Conley had made these comments, and after those comments were made, you hired the Conley group to come and have an armed security checkpoint in here where they get to decide who gets in and out. They haven't allowed people in, but the fact that you have to pass through a checkpoint that they run is extremely terrifying to most of us, especially after these comments were publicized and still no action's been taken. We were told that it was going to get pulled and then we'd discuss it and we'd hear things about it. But West Des Moines has taken action more quickly than you all have. We just sat here and we talked for like 10 minutes about the animal manager, I think is like a fine thing to talk about, but it's really just interesting to me that we'll talk about things like that. We won't talk about the housing crisis. We won't talk about COVID, even though now it's back and we all have to wear masks again. We won't talk about all sorts of issues like the water pollution, we'll move trials, but we won't even talk about these issues. And we can't talk about these issues because you keep stopping us from speaking, and it's, it needs to stop, because we need to get ahead of these issues that are coming, these crises that are coming up. And instead, you all have routinely and just violently made sure that people can't talk about these issues that they have and that we all have and that, and the register and everything, it's not, some of the things we like, that we need are bigger demands and we know that, but you won't even let us talk about those things, and you won't even let us talk about basic things most of the time. And it's just unacceptable, especially when week after week, things are getting put on the consent agenda that are known to be controversial, but are put on the consent agenda because people don't want any kinds of comments or criticism. It's disgusting and it needs to stop.
KT, I believe is not here. We're going to move on to Mimi Habab. Mimi? Is Mimi here? Let's move on to Garland Armstrong.
Good evening, I'm Mayor, County and Councilmembers. My name is Garland Armstrong. I'm at 3728 Hubble Avenue, and we are new residents here after living in the Chicagoland area of Displanes, Illinois for so many years, and we moved here on May 26th. And we're both disability advocates, and we used to belong to a disability organization called Access Living, and we are former ADA Advisory Committee members for Pace, Metro, Seat, and I was a former CTA RTA, and my wife was a former RTA ADA Advisory Committee member. And we also used to volunteer for all these walks and run events, and we do a whole lot. So we was former Chicagoans. And Mayor, if you ever want to see us personally, you can call, you can have your attorney or your counsel, like Alden Woman Westergaard, we'll give you our number and then our phone number, so if you want to see us personally, want to know us more, because after all, we're since we're new here, and so we just want you to know that my wife are good ADA advocates for, for people with disabilities. And so anytime if you want to talk to us personally, we'll be happy to hear from you.
Okay. Thank you. Heather?
Yeah, right here.
Do you want to just hand her the microphone? Maybe that'd be good.
Hi, Mayor, hi, Council. My name is Heather Armstrong. I just moved here from the Chicago area, and I want to thank you for keeping us safe, for being one of the most secured cities in the USA. And we need, like with the police, they need to help Mayor Lightfoot of Chicago so that their crime could go down, because I don't know why the crime in Chicago keeps on going up. Since we have like really good police officers here, maybe some of them should go over to Chicago and see how they could get their crime down, because the last like five years, it seemed like it went sky high. Thank you.
Thank you. And Garland, we have your, I think, phone number and all that and address, which you just gave to us, so we'll get, we'll get in touch with you and hear whatever input you would want to give us about ADA. Yep.
Good evening. My name is Jean O'Donnell, and I live at 2736 Forest Drive. I'm a member of the Iowa CCI Racial Justice Team. We have attempted to work with the city since 2018 to end racial profiling by the Des Moines Police Department. As you all know, many, many residents of Des Moines have come before you here and at community meetings over the last... last three years to share their stories of being racially profiled. The data collected from the police department indicates significant racial disparities in policing, which is the definition of systemic racism. The Marijuana Task Force convened and offered recommendations to help reduce these racial disparities. Multiple groups have asked to meet with our Chief of Police or to discuss the data, but this has been refused. Meanwhile, my taxpayer dollars pay the salary of the DMPPD Public Relations Officer, which from my perspective seems to spend most of his time dog whistling to white people about how fearful they should be of chaos and disorder, which really means black and brown people. The other day, I came across the CEO Equity Pledge on the Greater Des Moines Partnership website. Mr. Sanders, I noted that you had signed that pledge. I will read the first bullet point of that pledge. It says, "I will leverage the power and privilege that I possess to influence local and state policies that lead to racial equity. The community that has been impacted by documented racial disparities in our police department has offered their recommendations of such policies. Residents of our community have donated their time and resources to acquiring and analyzing police stop data and have made a clear case that there are racial disparities in the practices of our police department. CEOs of large businesses are all about data-driven decision-making, but the Des Moines Police Department-
Okay, your time is up. Jean?
Please live up to your commitments.
Colin Coulter. C-O-L-I-N-C-O-U-L-T-E-R. Colin Coulter. Okay. Carrie Gosnell. Carrie?
My name is Carrie Gosnell. I live at 660 Ronwood Drive on Ward 3. I'm a member of DSM Serge. For years, community activists have been asking you to work with them to end racially biased policing. In June of 2020, after the murder of George Floyd, weeks of protests in our streets and police violence on full display, you finally enacted a few small pieces of the Six Point Plan that was presented to you. I am thankful to those who actually put that framework together, but I won't forget the long drawn-out periods of radio silence when you let them out of all discussions. Those of you who pay attention know that you've done far less than what was asked. And we also see clearly that the work is only a priority when you become uncomfortable enough to feel that you must do something, to which I say, you'd better start getting uncomfortable. I see activists in our community prioritize what you seem to be unable to prioritize: taking care of our households and hungry residents, analyzing police data, thank you, just voices, listening to victims of police violence, and creating recommendations for actions such as the Six Point Plan and the Marijuana Task Force. I see you prioritizing symbolic statements of solidarity with Chief Winger and Scott Sanders and business as usual, such as the ability to maintain comfort in spaces you already dominate. Nothing that has been done has increased accountability nor actually changed the way DMPPD does their job. Most importantly, nothing has helped our residents feel safer. In fact, they are being targeted even more now. I need you to engage with the community and our activists, not arrest them. I need you to hold city employees accountable, and I mean all of them. I need you to take bold action. That means you need to be incredibly uncomfortable.
This council is incredibly privileged, white, other black people, criminally holds all the power in this city. We know through the blank for your inaction.
Okay, your time is up. I'll ask for Rick Credeman.
Your residents are asking you to exercise your power in the way that you're trying to help. Stop wasting precious time.
Yes, I asked to speak for the council mainly just to bring up, uplift the person that I feel was the local million-dollar man, and he happens to be a police officer. So-
Can you give us your-
Please, can I just go on? I'll give it to you afterward. I need to go on. I told this man, 2001, right after 911, that, you know, a good police officer or public servant is worth a million dollars or could be, you know. And I just saw him in action the other day, and I patted him on the back at the time and said, so you're the million-dollar man. So, we have one here. A million dollars isn't what it used to be, and possibly the people that went in on 911, it's not to be measured in money whatsoever. It could be, you know, far more. Anyway, going on to cost-effective, you know, it could be possible that we would want to double funding for public service and all kinds of public safety, but intelligently plan and include neighborhoods and possibly in localities, parks, et cetera, to talk about them. And we need to possibly rethink everything at this stage. I'm kind of a Benjamin Franklin Republic can, and he would be, think all for rethinking everything at this stage. And so, it's, I hope we're open to rethinking things. And that's the main thing I want to say.
Okay, Rick, do you have an address?
Actually, I'm kind of transitional right now. 346-2174.
That's your phone number? Do you live in Des Moines, Rick?
Yes, I live in Des Moines.
Okay. And do you have an address in Des Moines, Rick?
Right now, it's transitional, so I just do not have an address right now to give.
Okay. What was your old address, Rick?
1915 Clark.
1915 Clark. Okay, thank you. Ed Fallon. We've been trying to keep it on, Ed.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Ed Fallon, 735 19th Street in Des Moines. The IPCC report out this week, really, really concerning when it comes to climate. The report on the Gulf Stream slowing down and probably going to stop maybe soon, that's huge. The heat domes out west, the fires, the drought. I don't have to tell everybody here, I think knows how serious our situation is. And I really want to commend the council for your foresight so far. The energy audit, great work. The edible plantings, excellent. The flood mitigation work, I mean, you're doing good work. My only concern is we need to do more, we need to do it faster. And again, I commend you all for supporting the Food Security Task Force, and thank you for appointing me as a member to that. It's been going really well. Jerry McCarron has been great to work with, as has Dave DeYoung. It's doing really good work, and I think a report will be out soon. But this talk of slowing down and this talk about shifting focus, don't do that. We need all hands on deck now focused on the climate emergency. It's coming, it's coming fast, it's coming hard. We need to be as prepared as possible. We need to know where our food's going to come from, water as well, energy as well. But again, my focus has been on food, and I ask you to stay the course and stay focused on that. I mean, there's so much more we need to do. I mean, to keep the community plantings going, that's been great work. That's been excellent. Let's identify land in Des Moines that we're going to be willing to sacrifice the tax base on that to make sure we can farm it. There should be animals grazing and all these big vast tracts of empty grass. There's lots of possibilities here, tremendous possibilities. And I just ask you to stay focused. Don't let that slip away. We have so much more we need to do. And again, I think if you follow the news, and I know you do, it's coming, it's going to get worse, and we need to be as ready as possible. Thank you.
All right. Could we have a motion to receive and file our comments of our citizens and speakers this evening? It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimously accepted. I want to thank our speakers this evening for coming down and giving us your position. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.